All right, I want to welcome everybody to the September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five work session. It's five oh three. If I could get an approval of agenda, please.
Still move, Chairman. Second.
I'll pay you right.
Aye.
All right, that's a proposal amendment, a comprehensive land development resolution for data centers. Who wants to start off?
Um, we, Tim can come up and.
Absolutely.
Good evening.
I like them glasses.
I'm glad you do.
Look, you don't need them, they just make you look more sophisticated. That's what I always say.
Yeah.
I don't need them to see.
I just need longer arms. I have same problems, it'll worry.
And I think Chairman, you know, really what we want to try to get out of this session today is just any additional items that the board wants to insert into the ordinance, any feedback on the proposed language, and anything else Tim can think of there. So I'll stop talking then.
All right.
Kick it back a little bit.
Yeah, we had the proposed text amendment, went through the planning commission, they did make a recommendation that it be approved with the staff comments that were included. My staff report that was provided to y'all does include some red comments, suggested changes to help clarify some of the verbiage. So you've got that in front of you. We could go through those if you want. The primary one that was of concern was the very last comment dealing with section ninety-six dot nineteen, which was the need for an environmental impact study. The planning commission felt strongly that something along that line should be included with the proposed ordinance. So a copy of that, or that verbiage was created by staff. And then going back and forth with staff and other people here, we revised that verbiage, got some input from the regulated community, and you've been provided with three different texts. The original is the draft that I came up with, just with, just trying to come up with something, the starting point. Then the second verbiage, I believe, is massaged by staff further, and then third verbiage is by the regulated community.
So this is the last one, the last page is your third?
Yes, sir. The very last, dot nineteen, I believe, is that section. Yeah, dot nineteen.
In your packet, it starts like halfway on page seven, and then over on page eight is the final version.
And one time again, Tim, first one was yours, second one was staff, and third one was regulated.
I grabbed the wrong one. Can I look at yours, sir?
Absolutely.
The second one is from regulated community, the final one was after receiving comments from regulated community, and then staff reviewed it again and came up with revised verbiage.
Okay.
The regulated community still prefers their verbiage. And recommended that verbiage be taken with. The planning commission did not get the benefit of looking at the changes that were provided.
So the regulated community, forgive my ignorance, the regulated community meaning engineers, EPD, EPA?
Uh, the, not, not the regulating community, but the companies that would operate these kind of facilities.
Oh, I got you.
Something they'd like better.
The, the ones we're gonna regulate, or y'all are gonna regulate in their application?
Yes, sir.
Got you. I was thinking regulated companies to me is.
That's what I was wondering about.
EPD, EPA. The regulations. So ninety-six, seven, nineteen, the second one is, I'm gonna call them developers.
Because that would who. Yes, sir.
And then staff.
Okay. But again, the planning commission did not get the benefit of those additional comments.
Okay.
You said second one you cut this for the developers?
The second one is the developers, yes, sir.
All right. So the original was actually our planning committee?
The, the original one is something I put together, just, I had never even looked at an environmental impact study. I just came up with some verbiage, sent that out to the planning commission, they liked it, and so that made its way into the staff report. And then got discussed further as we went forward. Definitely do not recommend the original staff comments.
Right.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, you're.
Staff does not recommend the original staff comments, to put it that way.
Okay, the, the first section.
Yes, sir.
All right. I guess my comments on that is, the difference it looks like to me is they're not looking at any, noise light, natural resources, archaeological, archaeological or cultural resources. We talk about this a lot here, the natural resources are gonna be huge for me because we've got two aquifers under our ground. And, and, and we can't afford to mess one of them up, simple as that. I know people talk about displacing squirrels and rabbits and deer and all that, I don't think we ever have to worry about that. But we're known for our, you know, cakated woodpeckers, we're known for stuff like this that's, that's environmentally sound in this area.
Right.
And I think that is a resource we need to protect. And I don't, I don't wanna say, you know, we can't cut any trees, or we can't displace a rabbit because there's millions of them, but I think we do need to know what's there, because there are specific species in areas that may be affected by it. So I, I don't know, it's not that much difference between, I mean, Phase One, it can get pretty expensive. So I don't, I don't know why we wouldn't require that. I, I would think from the developer side is, well, if you find an eagle's nest on this property, shuts everything down. That don't mean you're not gonna shut it down when you get there and it finds it, so.
I mean, and even in years past of dealing with different, even going back to NRCS projects on farms, you have to, if you're disturbing over a certain amount of land, and we're talking about something bigger than this room, you have to, there's a group that'll come in and check for Indian artifacts, and just to make sure you're not disturbing something, and they have to come in and do their little study, and then they check it off. So there's, there's various groups that do need to check into something, because you, you know, the Indians did, you know, live in this area for a long, long time and were very active.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but our industrial park had all this done in the first, one of the first phases.
Yes.
Weren't we required to do that part of grad certification?
Yeah, there's.
Grad certification, was that, so there's a, there's a, you know, a part in there that we're, we're already doing with our industrial park. They had to be done to get where we're at on grad certification.
Yeah. I mean, I don't, I don't see how we can not do that. I think that's a responsibility that we, we have. And if anybody's gonna do it, that we need to put their responsibility on.
So you're, you're on number one?
I'm on the last one, staff's final report, is that?
Yes, sir.
And that's the recommendation of the zoning board?
The recommendation from the zoning board, they did not get to see that final draft, so I can't say how they feel about that.
Then let's look at one and three and see what the differences are. More slide, natural resources.
Water resource. And I think, Tim, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think I remember the difference between one and three was the energy use piece of it there. So on the third line, it talks about, the study shall, shall at a minimum address potential impacts to energy use. On the, the final version, I think we changed that to energy generation.
Yes, sir, and that, that is correct. We also backed off the term, I think in the initial one it used an environmental impact study. And we backed off of that because worded like that, those can cost hundreds of thousands of dollars. And requiring someone to submit that at the application phase could be very costly. And then we talked about the environmental Phase One study, was that the term?
I can't remember, but there was another.
There was another term that was bantered about, but basically that is a study that you perform as part of your due diligence in buying a property, and it's more about revealing hidden features that could negatively impact a purchaser. Not so much anything that we would, well, nothing in it would be what we'd be interested as part of the zoning application process.
So I don't see where it says that the second will be included would be done by a qualified professional, is that? Says environment impact study and application for conditions for, that shall include information on potential impacts to air quality. So is that just a boilerplate information on general impacts, or is that a, is that an engineering, a professional engineering study that says these are potential, real potential impacts?
Uh, staff didn't create the second one, so I really couldn't address that.
I mean, the, all right, maybe I'm confused. The last one is. The first one was staff, the second one was, I'm gonna say developer.
Yes.
And then the last one was?
Staff again.
Staff again.
After receiving comments.
So do we know if the staff, and staff meaning your staff or the board?
My staff.
Okay.
Or your county's staff.
So just out of curiosity, not you, Tim, for these guys, are we pro data center? Because then we're gonna be less restricted. And what I mean by pro, it doesn't mean like you have to vote for a data center, it just means you'd be open to a data center coming, under the right conditions. Because if we put a bunch of parameters in place that hamper it, right? Like California, there's so much, right, builders don't even wanna be bothered, it's cost prohibitive. And if it really doesn't impact us, right, then we strike that out, and that's why I'm asking that question. I don't, now for you, Tim, I don't know what the environmental impact is, because staff made the recommendation, right? What does the impact of that, and what does that look like? Because I got here late, I apologize.
Way outside of the scope of what I would get my mind around at this phase of the game. I've never dealt with that, and what that information's gonna look like, we typically haven't seen that. Closest we got into that would be with like a rock quarry application, and where they're talking about pre and post-development phases of the project. With something like this, I, I don't know what it would look like when I get submitted.
And to your point, Delon, I think that's a good point. I'm, I'm gonna give my personal opinion here. Absolutely pro in the right place.
Right.
With the right parameters, right? And I think that's why, if you put the, the safety fence around it here, but to what you said, if you, if you put a safety fence where you can only do one thing, and that's not their thing, you know, I, I get that. I do like the fact that the last one has the last sentence. County reserves the right to require additional areas of study where site-specific conditions indicate the potential for these harmful, you know, impediments or environmental impacts. Whereas the first one sounds more like you gotta do all this.
Right.
And it may not, it may not be.
Approve you in the end.
Yeah, it may not even be impactful to your location or your project. But, so I, I think maybe the minimum, and then, you know, if it's, I'll just say, if it's in the industrial park, we already know these are things that are, are taken care of. But if it's on private property near neighborhoods, then we go, okay, we, we need to make real sure.
Now we need to have it studied.
Need extra protections if it does not adversely affect the community.
It protects our community, you know?
So that last sentence, in my opinion, is all we need in that area, because then we have the ability to impose what we need for that particular data center. And I'm, I'm not gonna say all data centers are alike, because they're not, but based on what we've seen, it's been water and it's been power. I don't know that they kick up a bunch of fumes, or, because it's computers, right? I don't know what that looks like, and maybe somebody comes in and places a solar field, and that's a good thing, because they're not really taxing our local utility. And if they use closed loop, great, it's filled with water one time, and it's not a burden on the system, at least on the system that we have built up to support a data center.
There's also, apparently there's one in Social Circle operating now, that I've had several people.
I will be going to visit that one at the end of the month.
All right, Tim, is that one you own?
Yes.
And that is supposedly one of the quiet ones, but then you talk to people that's got some of the older ones, that's.
I think that goes right back to what, what Delon's saying. We know about the horror stories from when they were put in and didn't have these. And so a lot of the, a lot of the notes, a lot of the research I've done was, this community was proposed one, and they looked at one that was done three years ago, and everybody said, heck no, we ain't doing that because of this one. And they said, okay, well, we'll put it in, but we're gonna have these parameters that solve that issue. Whether it was light, noise, pollution, whatever, we solved it with this. So now, we don't need to keep looking at the one that was five years ago, look at the ones that have fixed it. And so, but I think we do have the same, we make sure we have what fixed it in ours.
Sure.
There's a baseline of, of.
And I've been talking a lot with a, a county that has now got, actually got a moratorium on, no more data centers there, because within the last two years, how many they've gotten there. But they have worked really well with the county about the extra things that they needed, they absorb all of that.
Sure.
Even taking care of the community around where they are. And I think the planning and zoning person reached out to you because they knew you, Douglas Field, Douglas?
I don't remember that.
Um, anyway, I, I had talked to the commissioner, and he said that she was gonna, they were gonna reach out to you. And it, the thing that they, they did is they had their guidelines down pat first, before they started letting them in. But now, the amount of traffic, even though it's weak, but on top of the other growth that they've had in their community, their traffic now is, it's backed up, it's unbelievable. So that's how come they're having to cut back on them. He said, actually, the data centers are, are great for their community, but it's all the other growth that they've had in the trucking business and everything else that has hampered so many things. But he said, as long, if we've got the wording correctly here, and we take care of our community, it's a, a great plus for your county, if it's in the right location.
Just out of curiosity, Tim, which data center did you visit, and what did you observe?
I went to Social Circle. It was interesting, I pulled down into there just to let the security guard know what I was doing on the periphery, I didn't want them wondering who I was.
Taking him down.
Didn't ask for access to the site or anything like that, but just standing there with the guard talking, I could not hear the facility. It, you know, it was a hundred feet away, and we had a conversation, lower voice than this right now, and I could not hear the facility.
Facility was a hundred feet away?
I was about a hundred feet away from the building at that point. But bear in mind, this is a sixty-foot tall building, parapet walls, equipment's all on the roof, so noise is going up. And it was a fairly clear day, so it didn't have low cloud cover reflecting noise back down at me. I did move up the hill away from the facility, about, guessing about a thousand feet, where I was standing up there. And ambient noise at that point was about sixty decibels, just, just sound. And if, if it was dead quiet, my decibel meter was listening sixty decibels, I could just hear it. It kinda reminded me of the sound of the car wash, the blower at the car wash, and that's what I could discern there. But you let any little additional noise go, and it disappeared.
Like a car going down the road, or?
Yeah, yeah, just, or the wind picked up a little bit, and the pines started rustling behind me, and that noise disappeared. And that was at sixty decibels. You've got the recommended, recommended levels, I believe, are forty-five and thirty-five, forty-five during the day and thirty-five, so significantly lower than that. But even at that, that right there probably is forty-five decibels, if you can hear that hum. I'm not sure.
Some is light.
So that's, but that's, but just life makes that kind of, I mean, just everything going around outside in a rural area is gonna be higher than that. You're not gonna, that's you're not gonna hear. I would be curious to go at night and see what it sounded like at Social Circle, I just didn't wanna drive up there at three in the morning.
Yeah.
But that was my observations there. No traffic, nobody came in and out of the facility while I was there. I don't know how many employees were on staff, there weren't large parking lots with many vehicles, I didn't see that. Contrast that with Fayetteville. So I went over to Fayetteville, and there's already one large-scale data center there, and they're building more. And there was a ton of construction traffic coming in and out of there, hundreds of cars in the parking lot, people directing traffic in and out of the facility. Now, you could forget trying to get a decibel reading on it, it's on a four-lane divided highway, lots of traffic going by, you couldn't hear anything coming out of there for the car traffic. So I have no idea what kind of noise that that facility's putting out.
So that's initial construction, we, you would expect and anticipate that, no matter what, if we were constructing a school, there would be construction traffic.
During, during construction.
Right. But after that, it's.
I was just painting the contrast of what was going on during the construction phase versus the end news phase, based on the observation of those two facilities. Those were the two closest, and I felt like I got a pretty good picture visiting those two sites, and I didn't do any others.
What would you say was the size of the Social Circle data center?
I didn't run numbers on it, but it looked like five or six of the Amazon warehouses. And in Fayetteville, it looked like one of the Amazon warehouses sitting there, and more being built.
So with five, you barely had a sixty, sixty-five decibel reading, thousand feet away. And for all intents and purposes, I guess the one that we're talking about is gonna be in the middle of a hundred-some acres?
The current, I believe, is four hundred acres, with the required buffer of a hundred feet around the perimeter of the project, based on current recommendation.
And that is, and that's in our, so, we don't currently have an application for a data center, right?
That is correct.
Okay. I wanted to be clear, because I, the way the news reported it this morning, we were gonna approve a, a data center coming to Jones County and be here.
That's all I've heard.
You know, and, and social media's blowing up about it, so I just wanted to be clear that we don't have it. These are more about protections that when one wants to come here, we have something to go by when to approve or deny. That's my opinion, anyway, so. Question in the bag.
May I add something, please?
I, I get, I get you, I can get you just a minute, okay? Anything else that you need to share with us, or we need, any questions for Tim?
You look like you wanted to say something, but you.
Do you wanna say?
We reserve the right to ask more questions, Tim.
If you went through, let me know. I didn't mean to catch you off, Tim, if you went through.
I'll defer to the PNC chairman.
Okay.
I didn't mean to shut this conversation down, I just wanted to add something to it.
For the record, we.
I'm Erlene Hamilton, I'm sorry, I'm here in the Planning and Zoning Commission capacity. I did go visit Social Circle also, and the thing, one of the things I wanted to bring up is they have a monster power line, and their own little substation that brings power into this, it, it's a really big facility. And then I heard after planning and zoning talked about this, there was something that hit the news for Monroe County about a power line that was gonna have to be built over to Rumble Road. And the, really, the essence of that comment, those comments, was about the land that was gonna have to be condemned. It was gonna be taken by eminent domain, so the people in the path of that power line, while they are not right around the data center site per se, they are gonna pay the price for that data center being where it is, because they're gonna lose property that the power company is gonna take to build that half, at least, that's what I got out of that article for what that's worth. So that would be a concern I would share for something that's being built, not in the industrial center, is it's gonna take a lot of power, and how are you gonna get it there, and who else is gonna be impacted? Not just the people right around the data center, but the people that are in the route of the power, so.
Ms. Erlene, one question, the power line you mentioned going to the Social Circle facility, was it similar to the one north of the government center here, or something similar that runs up and down Gray Highway?
Help me with the size of the poles. The thing that struck me is the poles are really, really large, and they're really, really tall. They come out from a date, from a, a substation across, I think it's Highway two seventy-eight, and they come up through a wooded area, and that, if I read the, the data center right, it's got like two sections of buildings there that are both data center, and it is, it is a really, it's not like what I call a high line, but it is much bigger than what you would see, what I would think you'd see going up and down Rumble Road.
Right. And I'd heard the Monroe County proposed power line was gonna be something similar to what crosses north half of Jones County, and they were going, seven point eight miles it's gonna be.
Yeah, because I forget the name of the power company up there, but they were the ones that were gonna be building that, and that was what the article. I didn't do any more research, I just read that article, but.
Georgia Transmission Corporation.
The path of, of that, of the power access being something that would be, need to be considered as well as the site itself.
But being somebody that's been there, done that, with this power line that's here now, I lost, I lost, uh, between the bypass and the power line, forty acres now.
How much money did you make, never mind?
They didn't, eminent domain, right?
Almost. I was the last one they, they settled with, but that was, that was on the bypass. But I didn't have much choice, but I still own the property, you know? It's got pretty pastures and stuff underneath it, so progress, just like the bypass, I lost a lot, you know, it was neat. And, you know, hate to say it, but you got a handful of folks, like I've been there, done that in two different situations, with bypass thing that, that.
I'm not saying that you don't do it, I'm just saying that that is a significant impact to the people to whom it's going.
Pilotize a lot easier than a bypass.
I would say that, I, I know since I've been on this board, there, there's not been an appetite to condemn and, and take property, unless there's a crazy situation where one person's holding up the whole county, you know, and they're just not, not wanting to move. But I don't think there's an appetite for condemnation or eminent domain. That being said, that was one of my bigger concerns in, in the first report, Tim, was, you know, power production and power usage of these things. And y'all addressed it very well in the first part of it, explaining that even if we didn't put, have one put in Jones County, if another county around us put one, it still affects our power grid, because it's all tied together.
Right.
I was back and forth on the onsite generation for generators and, you know, gas powered generators, diesel power, because of the pollution nowadays, with the generators that I've put in recently, there's no, basically no pollution. With the, with the EPA regulations bringing the PM two point five down and all, we're, uh, you can, you can pretty clean out, you don't have a bunch of black smoke bill on out of it. There is noise from them, but I think there's a way, if we require the noise levels at what they are, they can encapsulate them, they can put them on top of a building, between buildings, whatever, they build sound walls around them, whatever needs to happen, because our regulations would say that X number of decibels are not coming off your property. So whatever it takes to, to minimize that is one thing. So I don't, I'm really not stuck on not having onsite generation from that. But I would like to ensure that, in, in our situation, Tri County, if Tri County has to build infrastructure for a site like this, that's on the developer, that's not on, on the county. Because at the end of the day, if, if Tri County invests and puts a risk factor on it that we're gonna sink five million dollars into, I mean, she's in round numbers, five million dollars into a, a infrastructure for, for power, and the company goes belly up, Tri County has no other option other than its ratepayers to, to pay that debt back. So I, I think if, if it's known it's a burden to our system, then they fix that, whoever's requesting to put it there.
Same way with fire and EMS. You know, if they need a certain type of equipment to put out a fire in that data center, then they need to equip the closest fire station with whatever that is needed for an emergency situation in that building. So it's not a burden on to our taxpayers.
I, I do think that staff and the PNC board, by visiting these other sites, doing the research on them, have come up with a very good starting point on these, maybe a final point. But a good starting point, because you, you've addressed all the issues that we've talked about, all the issues that I see that most of the people that are. um, all the issues that I see that most of the people that are uninformed or misinformed about these, these projects would, would like to know. And I, I mean, you've addressed a lot of them, the power, the water, the noise, uh, site plants, the traffic, you know, a lot of that, um, like Daylon was talking about, the closed-loop systems on, on chillers and for water produ, uh, for water usage. I mean, putting a, putting a huge onsite well or reservoir gets you where you don't, you don't tax the, the, uh, the system that we have. I would like to know if the, the board, if your board was, is okay with your final recommendation on, and you, you may have clarified that, and I didn't understand it, but the, the last one, uh, I think I'm okay with it, personally. I just, just wanted to make sure that, you said the board hadn't had a chance to see that one yet.
That is correct, some of the board did see it.
Yes. Are you getting any, any pushback, any comments?
Maybe it could be a good question, maybe for Ms. Hamilton?
Okay.
Just happy to get, you getting called back up again.
So what am I doing?
Sam's got, Sam's putting you on the spot now.
Yeah, so, so Tim said the, the, um, so I'm assuming the board came up with this one, then we had the regulated companies.
We didn't see.
Okay, that, um, basically wanted to water down y'all's version of it. But, but the staff kept, I would say ninety percent of what y'all, instead of saying we need a full-on environmental study by a third-party engineering service, uh, at this point, the start of it is an environmental impact report that addresses all these things with the option to say, if any of these things are outside of the parameters, then we reserve the right to ask you to go further in detail. And, and like we said, if it was in the industrial park, where we've already got all these things, where we did a full-on environmental study for that site, that thousand-acre site, there would be no need for them to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to do that. But if it's on a site unknown to us, and we don't, we don't know about it, then we can ask for them to do it. And I just, I was asking him if, I, I think he said y'all's board had not had a chance to see the final version of that.
We talked about, um, the, what the initial request was, the expense of what that initial request was, and how broad it was. And at the time we proposed it, I don't think we really knew either exactly what all that would require, but we just wanted to be sure that that concern was out there and addressed. And so Tim came up with the language, I think, without us appreciating that it was, it would be as expensive as what it turns out to be. But at the same time, based on talking to the zoning commission board members, that concern is still very much alive and well, so we don't want to lose that requirement as a part of, of what we're doing here. So if this, if this is step one and step two, and it still gets us to the same outcome, then I think, and I'm, I can't speak for them, but I think that they would be comfortable with that.
Yeah, and I will say, uh, and I know this is probably gonna sound, uh, smart alecky, but there were six lines of requirements in y'all's, and there's six lines of requir, so he didn't take out much meat out of that. Just changed some verbiage, and I think basically not requiring it on the front end, but having the option to require before it's approved, before the project is approved, is where it landed.
So my question would be, how is the decision made that it would be required for the next step?
It, it says, uh, the county reserves the right to require additional areas of study where site-specific conditions indicate a potential for significant environmental, cultural, or community impacts.
So how will the county decide that?
It comes to y'all first.
So we would get to say, this is a spot we think deserves all the rest of this other stuff?
Then it comes to us.
Okay, so it's not?
It's not, it's not a said and done, you know, we still got the last.
And we go back through the same process? I think we would be good with that, I, I feel good with that.
It would, uh, I think it would solve a lot of problems, and if there was an issue, we, we, we had an opportunity to address it then.
And, and we landed on, maybe back for Tim, we landed on, uh, forty-five decibels at daytime, thirty-five nighttime?
Yes, sir.
So if somebody asked in our regular meeting, what's a normal conversation decibel? And I wouldn't say my normal, 'cause that's probably seventy-five, but your normal is probably forty-five.
Fifty-five, fifty?
Just a normal talking conversation.
We've been averaging fifty-seven during the meeting.
You've been, you didn't test.
That was seventy-five.
What was Wendy's?
I was, I was just eighty.
If you don't have your contraption, then you.
I can turn it up while I can hear you even louder than.
You know, I, I would have, you know, everybody that I've talked to said they were between fifty-five and sixty-five at the property line of their decibel. Ours, ours much lower than that, I, I'm very comfortable with the noise impact. Because we, I, I know that we need to look at, it's different in downtown Douglasville than it is, you know, five miles from the nearest red light.
Right.
You know, out into the woods, so quiet is quiet in the country.
Yes.
You know, noise is quiet in the city, so I just want to, you know, be in, in mindful of, of, of that, too, so.
I don't know that I would, and again, I, I'm pro-business, I'm not a fan of restrictions, right? But I'm a fan of having the option to provide those. Decibel, if we understand what our decibels are when we're speaking, and even if a group of us was gathered, to impose a range that a business could operate in, when just normal conversating were above that, it seems kinda weird, right, to me? And I know site-specific, if, if they're in the middle of a hundred-and-fifty acres, I'm not gonna hear five-hundred decibels. I don't think, they're in the middle of, would I?
Oh, yeah, five-hundred.
Depends on topography.
It's an ex logarithmic geometric progression. But one of the comments I had, um, was what you might not hear during the day, like when it's dead quiet.
Yep, sound, sound travels.
You hear that, and that's forty-something decibels right there?
Yep.
So if there's nothing, yeah, that's forty decibels, the refrigerator. So if you're in a dead, quiet spot, and you're on your property.
I hear the buzzing in the air.
On your property, and it's something that wasn't there before. So that's when, looking at what's the ambu, ambient sound level for that area, and if it's fifty, just sitting there dead quiet outside, and so if you're forty-five, you're not gonna hear it, 'cause everything's gonna mask that. But if we're at forty-five at night, and the resting sound level there is forty, then you are gonna hear it.
Just out of curiosity, do you hear the bypass from your house?
Every night.
I live probably two miles north of the bypass, and I hear certain vehicles, trucks going.
What do you think that decibel level is?
Get you up on the side of the bed real quick at three o'clock in the morning when the jake brake goes off.
I'm just curious, like what's normal?
It's tolerable at my distance, but if I lived where Chris lived, it would probably wake you up, and I would probably have triple-pane windows in my house.
I grew up right beside Highway forty-nine.
Right.
And I could hear trucks going over the.
Sound carries more at night than today.
This will be quieter than a, a highway. I, I don't doubt it, you know, because.
Daylon, at nighttime, I can hear the railroad at Juliet from Bradley.
On the railroad, yeah, look, I can hear the railroad over on, can't, yeah, I know they're nowhere near me. But, and again, we're comparing a railroad to a, um, a data center, we probably wouldn't hear the data center that far away.
That's right.
And, and that's where I was curious, like what is the worst sound that we could hear? And I don't even know when the.
From a data center?
No, no, when the rock cory, it's probably the loudest sound in the county, right?
With blast?
And what is that decibel level at, any idea? No, sir, okay.
What?
I don't hear it, so I don't know when it's happening. When does it happen, does anybody know?
At three o'clock.
But I, but I think we're looking at it from pro-business side, and then protection of the, of, of the taxpayer side. And, and here's the property line in the middle. I think, back to your point of, if they're on a fifty-acre track or a five-hundred-acre track, that's, that's their decision on how big of a track to buy to put this on it. And if you, and the buffer around it, so if you move it back to three-hundred acres, your decibel at the plant could be seventy-five or eighty, and still gonna be, we're measuring at the fence line, right, at the property line?
At the property line.
Yeah, so if it's normal conversation at the property line, then it doesn't matter if they're sitting right here, or they're sitting four hundred acres away. If they're four hundred acres away, they can be much louder, 'cause it, it's gonna be dead, and by the time it gets there.
Yeah.
But if they're right next to the fence line, and they have the buffer through there, the, the noise, ambient noise level, it still has to be the same. So that's on, I think that's on them. What I hadn't heard anybody say from, uh, the people I've talked to that have, 'cause we all know, there are, these, these, these things are trying to be put in everywhere, they're going everywhere asking, you know, hey, do you have land, do you have a spot, do you want them here, all this kinda stuff? I hadn't heard anybody say, we, we can't meet that decibel level, we can't meet that noise level, we can't meet that water restriction, we can't meet that power restriction. So, um, anything we don't restrict is an ease on their side, and I just, I personally don't think we need to make it. We're pro-business, we want them here in the right spot for the right benefit, but I don't think we need to give up. People say, don't give up the farm for it, I don't say we give up anything for it, not anything that we've already got. We're, we're giving up land, potential use of land for a long time, for the benefit of a tax. 'Cause let's be honest, they're not mega producers of jobs. We're not gonna have people in our communities that are buying gas, working in our grocery stores, working in our stores, and, and probably buying homes and, and getting this tax benefit. You know, if they're working a specialty job, they're probably coming to work every day and going home, and maybe in another county, maybe in this county, but it's just not a ton, we're not, we're not talking three thousand employees, you know?
Might be three, three or four hundred, which is still a benefit.
I mean, your construction time, yes, I would see more people there and more traffic there during that point in time. But after construction is completed, we're, you know, I think they said that at Meta, up in Luton County, which is huge, is.
That's the Social Circle one.
Okay, so they, they have less, and they have eleven buildings there, and they have less than three hundred employees total.
Wow.
So you don't have.
But you got a tax base between utilities.
It's unbelievable.
Utilities alone is ridiculous.
Isn't that about right?
What's that?
Was that about right for the number of employees at Meta? Two hundred, up, three, right up around three hundred and eleven buildings?
Was there that many buildings?
It's eleven buildings now.
There are now.
And about three hundred employees that work in the buildings, about twenty to twenty-four in every building on two shifts.
I knew Tim would be useful for something tonight.
Hey, I've been doing my homework, too, thank you.
Is there any other questions for Tim?
No, I, I just want to commend the, um, staff and the, and the board for doing such a great job. And I think, I think our next goal is to, um, inform and educate the public.
Absolutely.
On what this means, 'cause I think so many people think that we were coming here at six o'clock to vote to approve a data center coming to Jones County.
Right.
It's so the opposite of that.
Yep. All right, nothing else, appreciate it, Tim, like, Tim, any citizen?
I, I did want to say one thing, Tim, are you gonna be here at six o'clock, kinda give a brief overview of? That would, that would be great.
All right.
Thank you.
Any citizens like to come forward tonight? No citizens? Anything else for our work session?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, all fair, right?
I mean, since our clock is in five o'clock.
That's clock wrong, it's five forty-seven.